Call to order Tuesday night, April 26, 2022, the regular meeting. If I can also have roll call, please, at this time.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Bogus.
Here.
Commissioner Shu.
Here.
Commissioner Matomedy.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Here.
President Lamb.
Here.
Student Delegate Lamb.
Here.
And Student Delegate Liang. Okay, that's roll call, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the public for joining us this evening. You will see we have fewer people than usual sitting up here at the DICE this evening. Just a few hours ago, we learned that all of our Board Commissioners and some staff may have been recently exposed to COVID. Out of abundance of caution, we have encouraged any staff who do not need to be physically present at the DICE this evening to join the meeting by Zoom. Coded cases are on the rise in our community, and at this time, we continue to take precautions by wearing masks at public meetings, and we encourage everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated and boosted. If you have symptoms, please stay home and get tested. Thank you. Childcare will be provided this evening from 5:00 to 9:00 for children ages 3 to 10. The childcare is upstairs on the third floor in the cafeteria, and as usual, snacks will be provided. So moving into general information and opening items, our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatish Aloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatish Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatish community, and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Thank you. Item number two, approval of board minutes, regular meeting of April 12, 2022. I'd like to ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections?
President Lamb, I noticed that it says by teleconference, and I don't know if that's to indicate that it's hybrid or whether that should be in person. Because we were in person. I can change that to hybrid.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wiseman Ward, can you repeat your question?
Yes, it says the Board of Education met in regular session and parentheses by teleconference on Tuesday, April 12, but we met in person via, I know there was a hybrid option, but it says by teleconference, so I didn't know if that was accurate or needed to be changed.
No, that's a good catch. There were no commissioners appearing by teleconference, so we should edit that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiseman Ward. So with the corrections, as named that we were, board members were in person, it was a hybrid option, hybrid meeting, at this time, I'd like to have roll call with that addition, edit.
Student Delegate Lamb.
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu.
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez, if he comes in. Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
And President Lamb.
Yes.
Okay, let's exercise.
And at this time, we will move into the superintendent's report. I'd like to call upon Superintendent Matthews.
Thank you, President Lamb. Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, staff, good evening, public. In April, we celebrate the rich and diverse culture and contributions of the diverse population of Arab-Americans. National Arab-American Heritage Month has been observed during the month of April since 2017. An estimated 3.7 million Americans have Arab roots, according to the Arab-American Institute, with ancestry traced to 22 countries in the Middle East and North Africa, including Lebanon, Syria, Egypt, Palestine, Morocco, Iraq, Jordan, Yemen, Bahrain, Tunisia, Algeria, Sudan, Qatar, Saudi Arabia, United Arab Emirates, and others. In San Francisco Unified, we honor our Arab-American students and families. The week of May 1 through May 8 is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And here in San Francisco Unified, we celebrate the teachers we have in San Francisco Public Schools, not only during Teacher Appreciation Week, but all year long. Teachers are masterful at both teaching and learning, constantly growing and evolving as professionals. They handle challenges with grace and joy, committed to having positive impact on their students' lives. My teachers at Grattan Hoover Magatir molded me into who I am today. To all San Francisco teachers, I want to say thank you for your commitment to our students every day, and especially in the hardest of times. Thank you for bringing your joy and professional and personal best to ensure each and every student receives quality instruction and equitable support required for them to be able to thrive in the 21st century. School Lunch Hero Day is Friday, May 6. It's time to remind our food school heroes and sheros how special they are. Please join me in saying thank you to all our student nutrition dining staff at our elementary, middle, and high schools, the staff serving meals to early education students, and to our food delivery drivers. They have worked so hard to keep our students nourished in school and ready to learn, showing up every day in service of helping students thrive inside and outside of the classroom. Today, I was honored to join Governor Gavin Newsom, Mayor London Breed, and City Treasurer Jose Cisneros to celebrate the 10-year anniversary of San Francisco's kindergarten-to-college program. K-2C automatically opens a savings account seeded with $50 in public funds for every child entering kindergarten in San Francisco Public Schools, putting students on a path to college from their first day of school. K-2C is the first universal child savings account program in the country, and has been replicated at 123 active savings account programs, reaching more than 1.2 million children in 39 states. As of today, it has helped San Francisco Unified School District students save $11 million in their kindergarten-to-college accounts by giving children the opportunity to save for college at such a young age. This program is helping students and families continue through their educational journey, knowing that college is possible for them, no matter who they are or where they're from. And finally, health and safety remains our top priority, and we continue to align health and safety policy and our guidelines in compliance with state and local public health guidelines. Please note that we continue to update our COVID frequently asked questions on our district website, and recent updates include the California Department of Public Health and the San Francisco Department of Public Health's schools guidance for mega events, whereby proof of vaccination card or negative COVID test is no longer required for mega events. You can find these on our district website under COVID FAQs. And that ends my announcements for this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. Moving into our student delegates' report, I'd like to call upon Student Delegate Joanna
Thank you, President Lamb. Good evening, everyone. We would like to give an update regarding our last SAC meeting. We have rescheduled our annual Youth Summit to May 14, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:15 p.m., with a break in between for lunch. Please join us for student speakers, workshops, and for Student Delegate Candidate Forum. This year's theme is Leaders in Action: An Opportunity to Apply Knowledge and to Effect Real Positive Change. It will be via Zoom, it's virtual, and you can sign up at bit.ly/sacsummit2022. And next, the student delegate race is now open. Candidates have the chance to declare for candidacy by filling out our declaration form at tiny URL slash SFUSDDEL, that's D-E-L, 23. And the voting form will come out this Friday, April 28. Candidates will be able to campaign until May 14, and we anticipate that we'll be able to announce our elected student delegate on May 16. Our next SAC meeting will be on May 2 at 6:00 p.m. We meet in the third floor cafeteria at 555 Franklin, and if you have any questions, you can email us at sac@sfusd.edu. Thank you, President Lamb. That concludes the student delegates' report.
Thank you so much, Student Delegate Lamb. And we will now go into recognitions and resolutions of accommodation tonight, none tonight. Recognizing all valuable employees, our RAVE awards, I'd like to call upon Dr. Matthews to introduce the award winners.
Thank you, President Lamb. Tonight, we have two awards. Our first award is our Special Service Award. This award is being awarded to a teacher at Alvarado Elementary School, Taylor Springdorf, and it will be presented by her principal, Shira Sadha. Principal.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everybody. As the principal of Alvarado Elementary School, I am thrilled and honored to announce this month's RAVE Special Service Award recipient, Taylor Springsdorf. Taylor is one of the hardest-working and most committed teachers I have ever met. As a special-day class teacher, he goes above and beyond to support his students and their families. It is clear to everyone how much Taylor cares for his students and ensures that they are visible, included, and valued members of our school community. Taylor is calm, kind, and patient, and has spent countless hours designing materials and adapting and modifying curriculum to make it multisensory and accessible to all of his students. He has a strong working partnership with the paraprofessionals in his classroom, and the supportive environment they have created shows up in the way his students are thriving. Taylor, congratulations, and thank you for all you do for Alvarado students, families, and community. You are truly appreciated.
Taylor, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Shira. Thank you, Dr. Matthews. It's very nice to be recognized on this type of award. I wish all teachers got this recognition, but it's also so nice to work with Shira Sadha, who is such a supportive administration, to help me be the best teacher I can be. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations, Taylor, and congratulations to the entire Alvarado School. Next, we have our distinguished service award. This award is going to Kathy Giovinelli, a teacher at Jefferson Elementary School. This award will be presented by Principal Craig Berger.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, everyone, for being here to help me celebrate Kathy Giovinelli. She's one of our wonderful second-grade teachers at Jefferson Elementary School. She's been there 13 years. I've only known her once, this being my first year. However, it is very easy to know what she is all about and why she is worthy of this RAVE award. The daughter of a big and loving Irish and Irish-American family, Ms. G is all about creating and expanding her community. She cares for and loves her students and families as her own. You see it in the bunches of parents who linger at Ms. G's morning line on the yard. You see it in the older students who return just to visit and hang out in their old classroom. And you see it in the volunteers who come back year after year to help the current second graders. Ms. G does not just serve her students and families, she enlists them. And enlisting them, you are in her family for life. Ms. G firmly believes that when people are a part of a community, and they feel valued and loved and appreciated, that is when they can show the grit, the determination to do the hard learning that needs to be done. Please celebrate with me and all of us at Jefferson Elementary in celebrating Kathy Giovinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. And thank you, everybody. It's an honor to be here with all of you. It's an honor to be recognized, and just like the teacher before, I think every teacher needs, deserves to be recognized and honored. It's a special community at Jefferson, it's a special community in San Francisco. I'm a native, and so been here a long time. And I told Mr. Berger today, just, I feel very fortunate that every day I wake up, I look forward to going to work, and not everybody can say that. So I'm grateful to San Francisco, I'm grateful to this district, I'm grateful to Mr. Berger and all the families at Jefferson. So thank you very much.
That ends our awards for this evening.
Thank you so much, and congratulations again to Taylor Springsdorf and to Kathy Giovinelli. Thank you. Congratulations. At this time, we will shift to public comment and protocol for public comment. Please note that public comment is an opportunity for the board to hear from the community on matters within the board's jurisdiction. We ask that you refrain from using employee and student names. If you have a complaint about a district employee, you may submit it to the employee's supervisors in accordance with district policy. As a reminder, board rules and California law do not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with speakers. We will now go to public comment for SFUSD students. We will hear from SFUSD students who wish to speak on any matter. Students will have up to two minutes to speak unless otherwise indicated, and we will set aside 15 minutes of the general public comment period for students. And students may also speak at any other public comment time throughout the meeting. So at this time, do I have either in-person for students? Perfect, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Yosef Falsena, Assam Al Amir, and Sahib Al Mary. And you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. My name is Yosef Falsena. I'm a senior at Galileo High School, and we kind of want to bring up the topic about Eid, which is a holiday celebrated by Muslim people. The reason this holiday is important to me is because this is a holiday that I get to spend with my family, and it also occurs only once a year. And the reason I would like this, I guess, to be kind of put in with, you know, school calendars is because sometimes during Eid, you would kind of have to make the choice of, do you want to spend time with your family, or do you want to go to school so you don't miss it? And I think that if Eid was recognized as a holiday, it'll kind of help out those students who want to spend time with their family and, you know, also not risk like missing school or missing a test or certain assignments.
Thank you.
All right, my name is Assam Al Mary. I'm basically here for the same reason. I want to have Eid at our schools, recognize it at our schools, because just like he was saying, that we have to miss a day of school, and like have to make that up like as a punishment for ourselves, just to celebrate Eid. And like he was saying, we have to choose between either our family, or we have to choose either going to school. So I think that shouldn't be an option, we should just have a day of school off instead of choosing between those two.
Hello, my name is Soheb. I go to Reading Elementary. And why I think Eid should be recognized as a holiday, because people need a day off to spend with their family instead of missing school and learning. So that's why I think Eid should be recognized in school.
Thank you to our students that provide public comment, really appreciate it. At this time, I want to see if we have any student speakers joining us via Zoom. Mr. Steele.
Thank you, President Lamb. Again, please raise your hand if you are a student and you'd care to speak on any item during public comment, and forgive me if I mispronounce any names.
Sorry, I'm not a student, I just took my hand down.
Okay, thank you.
But I, yeah.
Hello, Soha.
Hello. My name's Abdullah Evangelos. I am a student at Reading Elementary School. Taking Eid off is essential because half of Reading belongs to the Muslim community. All of us have to miss an academic day to celebrate Eid holiday, and we do not want to miss out on our assignments, and we need Eid off, Eid is essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Sarah. I need to promote you to panelists in order to speak, so your video will be shown, but you can go ahead.
All right. My name is Sarah, and I go to Galileo High School. Student-centered, fearless, united, social justice, diversity-driven. Those seem to be the quote-unquote morals and visuals held here at SFUSD. Funny, now tell me why it's fair that Muslim kids with kids attending SFUSD must choose between celebrating their sacred religious holiday or fear that their kid will be behind in a lesson and miss important assignments? It's really disheartening to know that we have lots of Muslim families attending SFUSD, and we still can't recognize Eid as a holiday? Really sad to see that SFUSD is failing their Muslim students, but it wouldn't be the first time. Really disappointing to see SFUSD hasn't recognized an Eid solution, while in other states like New York, they have passed an Eid resolution. And it makes me wonder, what is New York doing that SF isn't? Thank you. Tata.
Thank you. And President Lamb, that concludes student public comment on Zoom.
Thank you, and thank you to our student speakers for public comment. And at this time, we will move into public comment. We've allocated 30 minutes for this evening, and I do think we will be able to have every speaker, both on Zoom and in-person, to speak. So at this time, I'd like to have a call upon the in-person speakers. Supriya Ray, Darcy Chan Blackburn, Chris Klaus. And you have one minute each, please.
Thank you. My name is Supriya Ray. I'm here to speak briefly about outdoor learning and equity. We hear equity used a lot, an awful lot, and that word should mean something. I hope that folks and powers that be on the board and SFUSD will help bring true equity to all of our students by paying attention to their needs, their needs in terms of behavioral concerns, academic learning loss, mental health, emotional health, and so forth. One of the best, cheapest, most efficient, quickest things that we can do is encourage teachers to take their kids outside. We don't need tons of equipment to do it. I've said this before, I truly hope people will listen. We're closing in now on the end of another school year where almost nothing has been done, despite past resolutions stating that going outdoors is important and should be done, despite even a bond reallocation of $14 million to outdoor learning, none of which has been spent. Lots of money has been thrown at things the district finds important. Why not this?
Good evening. My name's Darcy Chan Blackburn. I teach at Sheridan Elementary School, first grade. I'm asking you all to help make things right for our educators. SFUSD must provide a one-time compensation to the employees who received significantly decreased pay during the month of July this summer due to the errors of DNP, which I believe you all know about. We're educators, we care for our students, we love our students. We have worked tirelessly to overcome the many obstacles that this pandemic has brought to our students, to ourselves and our families. Because of the switch to empower, we are now not able to focus on our teaching. We have to somehow become financial experts, and we have to make sure that we have enough money coming in July to pay for all of the deductions that we have planned. To add to this distraction, educators are facing consolidations or layoffs. If we want to maintain the stellar educational workforce our students and communities need, you need to make things right. Educators need to have the full amount they anticipated. To do this, provide one-time additional compensation for the employees during the month of July because of the deferred net pay. There is money available in the rainy day fund. SFUSD has made it rain, so please access the rainy day fund.
Hi, I'm Chris Klaus. I'm a sped teacher at Washington High School. In the midst of this ridiculously hard year, the last thing that we educators need is to be worrying about our finances. Now, why are we panicking about our finances? We've had our pay messed up, big time. Many of us owe thousands more in taxes this year than in previous years, and we're having to become forensic accountants to check our own pay stubs. It's become a full-time second job for many of us to learn about these issues, track the errors on our checks, and then submit help ticket after help ticket, email after email, and even come down to district offices in person to try to find solutions and just get paid correctly without being ignored. Eight of my colleagues are here tonight because of this, and that's not everybody at my side alone. How are you going to fix this? Well, apply to help tickets in a timely manner. Fix the upcoming July paycheck disaster by moving the November bonus up, and add a new bonus to that so that we can pay our bills correctly and pay for that out of the rainy day fund. SFUSD's pay mistakes have caused a torrential downpour of problems for us educators. So you need to use the funding to help fix this flooding, and you need to listen to my colleagues who are here tonight. Please, you guys have the power to fix this. Fix it. We're done.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lani Inverati, sorry, apologies for pronunciation, Hector Pindan, Amber Yorich, and Sharif Yurk. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lani, and I'm here to support the students and members of the Muslim community, asking the board to discuss the resolution to recognize Eid. I'm here as a parent who hopes that her son will attend an SFUSD that is diverse, equitable, and inclusive, and provides the conditions for all students to thrive. I'm also here as a New Zealander, a country that has also experienced the evils of Islamophobia. And I believe that in order to disrupt this, we need to increase the visibility, the awareness, and celebrate our Muslim community. I'm frustrated that this resolution has not been put on the agenda, that members of the community have been asking for that for multiple meetings in a row, that it is Ramadan, that it is Arab Heritage Month, and still this basic courtesy to discuss the resolution has not been provided.
Hi, greetings, and it's nice to see some of you again, Dr. Matthews, Matt Alexander, and our new board members. My name is Hector Pindan, I'm a teacher at Dr. Martin Luther King Middle School. As guests on Ramatish Aloni land, we must do more than just acknowledge at the beginning of these meetings, we must actually act. Currently, at Dr. Martin Luther King Middle School, for my fifth year in a row, we're facing budget cuts. The same school, same year, we're facing larger class sizes with less adults throughout a pandemic where we're asking kids to... where we're asking kids to go off masks and everything. At what point are we going to actually begin to act in ways that honor our Aloni ancestors in this city? What equity are you actually providing to us, the historically marginalized communities with a portola in the southeast of San Francisco? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amber Ulrich. I teach seventh grade science at Martin Luther King. This is my fourth year in a row where we've done budget cuts. And I can't really say that I can see where the deficit goes because I have to patch and paint my own classroom walls. I have to maintain things in my classroom that should be maintained by district funding. I have 21 functional Chromebooks in my classroom. My smallest class is 19. If any of my computers are not fully charged, my smallest class has problems. If everyone in my larger classes shows up, I don't have enough computers that are fully functional. I have to give kids computers that are missing half their keys, or the F doesn't work, or the spacebar glitches out. Where is this deficit going if it's not going into maintaining our schools and the materials for our students to use? This is theoretically one of the greatest cities in the world, one of the richest cities in the world. Where is that money going if not to our future?
Good evening, members of the Board of Ed. My name is Sharif Zokoud. I'm with the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. I first want to just appreciate you all for recognizing Arab Heritage Month. It was really refreshing to hear that. Many of our community members were unable to come tonight because, of course, we are still fasting for Ramadan. This is now our fourth meeting that we've come to ask you all to please recognize Eid, to put it on the agenda at least for discussion. Many of us here are in support of the Muslim community and want us to recognize Eid. Can I have everyone raise your signs? We have the support of UESF, the support of United Players, various other community organizations. And really, all we're asking is that you put it on the agenda at least for discussion. Thank you so much, and also wanting to uplift and support our teachers getting paid as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call up our next group of speakers. Julie Roberts-Fung, Sadie Elliott-Hellman, Wasim Hugel, and Tariq.
Greetings, members of the school board. My name is Wasim Alhaj. I'm a caseworker and a longtime member of the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. Today, we are once again asking you to add a resolution recognizing Eid at San Francisco Unified School District to your next Agenda ASAP for implementation next year. Our families are relying on you, the school board, to recognize our traditions and holidays. Eid goes beyond prayer and celebration. Eid is about survival for our communities. Arabs and Muslims have been hit hard by Trump-era immigration policies, Islamophobic discrimination, surveillance, discriminatory policing, and right-wing attacks on the streets that continue to this day. Eid represents a moment of peace, hope, and collective power for our community. As such, we are here to stand in our power and urge the school board to put forward our resolution recognizing Eid in next year's calendar. It is our duty to improve the well-being of our students and their families. Our community has been asking for Eid to be recognized for years, and we've gone through all the proper channels. We urge you not to delay this anymore as you have time and time again. Also, support these teachers and pay them.
Hello, good evening, board. My name is Tarek Saman, and I live here in San Francisco. I was born and raised in Syria. Eid supposedly is one of the happiest days in the year, but for me, in the last five years, it has been one of the saddest days. It's a reminder that I am away from my family, away from my friends. I can't celebrate with them. But here, there are a lot of Muslim families in San Francisco who are with their families, and they still cannot celebrate this Eid, at least on the first day. Eid is, by the way, three days' holiday. We're asking for just one day to just celebrate, be with our families, remember our dead, and try to be happy for one day. Thank you.
Can you hear me with a mask on? My name is Elliott Hellman. I am here representing Jewish Voice for Peace, and I'm here to support the resolution to have Eid as a holiday. As a sign language interpreter, I've worked at schools all over the district for probably 20 years. And I want to tell a story about a kid. When I was working at Aptis Middle School, he happened to sit next to one of the deaf kids I was working with, so I got to know him. He was a Muslim kid, really great kid. From what I could tell, he didn't have stellar grades, but he had a really great attitude. And I saw him progress over the four years to become more and more involved in the school, to become more and more a part of, try to become a part of the larger school community. In his last year at Aptis, he wanted to run for school president or vice president or something. And the way it worked at the school was, everybody who wanted to run, they'd have an assembly, they would speak, give their stick, and then the kids right afterwards would vote. Well, it happened that the day they did that was on Eid. And I just can imagine how demoralizing it would have been. I had a lot more to say, but that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Roberts-Fung. I'm also speaking in support of adding Eid to the calendar. At this time of year, here's a couple of things that we're planning around: end-of-year field trips, middle school orientations, COVID vaccination events. In past years, our one-day-only COVID testing at site was during Eid. It's really been a blessing and an education to see families in our school and friends of ours celebrating Ramadan, and the different ways that folks are reflecting and making sacrifices honestly to participate in our school community. It would be amazing for SFUSD to acknowledge this important holiday. I also want to ask that the landing page for the Board of Ed meetings be restored. It's been removed, and now there's just a link to board docs for people who are trying to participate remotely. And that's a really complicated site to navigate, and it also doesn't have the automatic translation that's a part of the SFUSD website. This is a really simple and important way to maintain access. Also disappointed to hear that student public comment has been limited to 15 minutes, and that online general public comment was not allowed last meeting. From people trying to comment on other items, it seems like two school communities were concerned about the N-word being used, and Muslim families who are fasting from Eid were shut off. Please restore the public to our public meetings. Keep school sites and San Francisco educators whole. Thank you.
Dimah Hindawi, Madison Williams, Sarita Larwin, Kaylee Spiegelman, Kim Ellis. And I wanted to make sure that, did Sadie speak earlier? Yes, okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dimah Hindawi. I've spoken a few times so far, just like a bunch of us. So you've heard my public comment over and over. But letting y'all know, as was mentioned before, we've come to a few board meetings already. It's really important to us that Eid be put on the agenda. And then today, you've also heard from a bunch of students talking about their own experiences, something they'll be experiencing just within the next couple of weeks, and even next week with Eid coming so soon. And as was mentioned, a lot of us are fasting again. So just reminding y'all, no food, no water, and we're still here. And thank y'all for having us today, and I hope that by next year, the students won't be at school for Eid, and for the staff as well, and for other people to know more about Eid and Ramadan and Islam and representation at SFUSD. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison Williams, and I'm a teacher at Washington High School, and I really need your help. This February, I discovered a multitude of errors dating back to January 2021 in my paycheck. It was wrongly taxed for the whole year, and I ended up owing $2,500 to the government. I'm also a night school educator, and my paycheck was two weeks late. My issue was marked as resolved. However, I was told at the workshop that I would only receive 90% of my pay in an off-cycle check and 10% later, three weeks later, in another check, in my regular cycle check, essentially. When they uploaded my off-cycle check for night school and doing Empower, they said they were going to withhold 34% in taxes. Three days later, this pay stub mysteriously gone, and a new one, only withholding 3.5% in taxes. I have emailed and emailed and emailed, and no one's responding to me. So I'm going to need a little more time after the buzzer because I need your attention because no one responds. And I teach at Washington in the day, and I teach at night school in the night.
Thank you. Thank you for providing your comment. Dr. Matthews, can you please have staff member follow up with Ms. Williams?
Also, I was paid $8 less per hour for emergency class.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarita Laven, and I'm a first-year teacher at SFUSD. In March this year, after the switch over to Empower, I realized through looking at my paychecks with a colleague I was being underpaid in the range of $10,000 to $12,000. I was being placed below even the base pay for first-year credentialed teachers. And when I reached out to HR to fix this issue by opening a support ticket in March 24th, they never responded to me. I then forwarded that email to HR again 22 days later and got no response. I emailed someone from the HR office the same day, received no response. I then emailed again on April 15th for a fourth time to ask HR to resolve the issue and received a response that they would forward my help ticket to HR, from HR. And then it was rerouted to the salary office where I was told that it was my fault because I never turned in my transcripts to SFUSD. I sent my transcripts and the receipts showing I had done it before I was hired, and I was told that that wasn't true, and it was still my fault. To this date, my pay has not been fixed, and the payroll office has been openly hostile to myself and other teachers who've been trying to get our fair wages. Also, you should recognize Eid. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Yoshi-Spiegelman, and I'm a teacher at George Washington High School. The current compensation debacle reminded me of when I was onboarded the fall of 2018. My transcripts were also not processed correctly, and I did not receive comp on my correct pay schedule until January 2019, when a colleague warned me of the many mistakes SFUSD payroll had made on his pay stub for years and years. Sarita Laven, who spoke before me, is not an isolated case. There's been systemic negligence resulting in wage theft for many years, I believe. I and other colleagues at Washington demand that SFUSD provide educators with one-on-one financial consultation with a fiduciary. The consultation must be at the educator's work site, be provided at no cost to educators, and not interfere with the contract workday. Furthermore, I also demand UESF's deferred net payments demands be met, including providing one-time compensation from the district's rainy day fund for DNP issues. I also support Eid being recognized as a federal holiday. It was mentioned that it's Teacher Appreciation Week. I have not felt celebrated this entire school year. However, if you move to correct the district's pay mistakes, I will at least feel slightly less disrespected and demoralized. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Ellis. I'm a teacher at George Washington High School. I'm here to call attention to the continued issues my colleagues that you've just heard from are having with their paychecks. Some of my colleagues still have not been paid for the work they do. Many of them are new teachers paying off student loans and trying to pay San Francisco rents. I'm concerned that the mental and financial stress this problem is causing will lead to my amazing and dedicated teachers leaving my site, the district, and the profession. As Superintendent Matthews stated earlier tonight, our teachers make a positive impact on student lives, but they cannot do so if they are spending their time worrying about getting paid. Please remedy the situation immediately. Give teachers the timely support they need to fix these issues. Pay your teachers for the work they do. I personally do not want to lose the quality teachers at my site and my colleagues throughout the district. Thank you.
At this time, I'm actually going to shift to our virtual public commenters. I do have some more in-person cards, but just wanted to allow time for our Zoom participants. Mr. Steele, I believe there are nine hands up. Is that accurate?
That is correct, President Lamb. Actually, there are 10 now. So 11, 12. Actually, now that you've announced it, there are more going up.
Okay. We will likely need to extend public comment, but I will wait until the 30-minute timer to then see how much further we may extend for tonight. If we can just take those public comment this time, please.
Certainly. Thank you, President Lamb. Hello, Fakra? Fakra?
Yes. Hello, my name is Fakra Shah, and I am a teacher at Mission High School for almost the last decade. I wanted to start off by saying I'm really questioning SFUSD's ability to walk the walk based on blocking the Eid from being on the agenda and not allowing Muslim students to also participate in holidays just like everyone else. So that's an issue. And then also, the pay debacle and the disrespect of teachers, and now cutting programs and jobs for programs such as peer resources and teachers on special assignment. We have coaches that are being consolidated. Why are such crucial programs in our schools being cut and defunded when students need them the most? This is a very crucial and fragile time, and we need to hold these programs together, not cut them and not cut our coaches, who are doing so much to hold these programs together. I'm very distraught over the performative activism and care of BIPOC and all of the language that's used here. However, on, you know, on the ground and in reality, it's not showing. The care is not there. And I have been at school since 7:30 AM this morning. Instead of working on innovative curriculum and grading student work and getting that back to them in a timely manner, I am in my classroom on this board meeting. This is unfair for us teachers. We already work hard enough. The fact that we still have to take our time out to be here to fight for all these things that you can be fighting for us and advocating for us. Thank you. Please think about us.
Hello, Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Hi. First, I'd like to say that I saw the district is not terribly concerned about the current number of resignations. And you know, that's great, but districts are hiring now, and you're telling teachers, do your actions if we matter or not. I have to say that local districts are advertising that they pay their teachers what they're owed on time every time, which is not something that is for itself. I have a couple of quick recommendations to make process better. One, board meetings used to start in person at 6:00. Many teachers are now teaching till 4:30 or quarter to 4:00 because of time schedule changes made about a year ago with no advance notice or polling. And it would be great to go back to 6:00 so we could attend in person as well. Also, there is no need for salaried employees to be logging their hours. And frankly, as someone who worked 54 hours last week, it's deeply offensive, but if I want to get paid at all, I have to put in 35 hours. You can do better. I don't think Superintendent Matthews is logging his hours, is he?
Thank you, Jennifer. Hello, Alita?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Hi, everyone. Alita Fisher, I'm calling in tonight on behalf of the Mission High School PTSA. I'm a member of our executive board. I'm actually calling in from Phil Ting's Budget Town Hall out in the sunset. That's why I'm not there seeing your smiling faces tonight. I'm here to comment on behalf of adding Eid to the calendar. Mission High School PTSA has sent a letter to the commissioners. You will find that in your inbox this evening. So we hope you will bring that resolution for consideration before the school year ends. Also, Mission is undergoing our WASC accreditation right now, and we just had our parent interview this afternoon. And parents were asked by WASC, you know, if in a perfect world, what would you want? And without doubt, all of us parents, and this is just us parents, not educators, said, we want our teachers to have more time to plan together. We want more electives for our kids. We want our teachers to get paid on time. And we were all in agreement with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Amelia?
Hello, my name is Amelia. And if it were not for my experiences[1750.16]
Hello, my name is Amelia and if it were not for my experiences as a young person in peer resources, I would not be a teacher at Balboa today. Today, we stand at a crossroads where the future of peer resources is in jeopardy. SFUSD claims to support anti-racist teaching, student leadership and voice, but has begun to dismantle one of the few school-based programs that empower students to create social change and run peer-helping programs that address issues of inequity. All of our peer resources, SFUSD coaches have been cut from the budget, every single one. And all of our coaches have been slated for consolidation. Our coaches are essential to maintaining the integrity of the program. I attribute much of my own growth as an educator to the ongoing mentorship I have received over the past 10 years from Sarah Brandt. Her thought partnership around curriculum has deepened my own equity lens. The constructive criticism she has given me after an observation has made me a better teacher the very next day. We need our coaches. Please restore the peer resources TSA positions and ensure our staff can maintain their positions. Consolidation placements are going out on Friday. Please act now. Thank you.
Hello, Hattie?
Hi, I'm a former peer resources and Mission High School student who now attends UCLA. I'm here to talk about the cutting of funding for our coaches. This program taught me critical professional and academic skills that I use every day in college. Their educators taught me how to deconstruct and name institutional oppression in the world around me, how to write a resume, an interview for jobs, scholarships and internships, which is part of the reason I can afford college, how to address injustice in the world and at our school. And extremely, and it was extremely helpful in helping me prepare for college courses through our dual enrollment program with the University of San Francisco. These coaches were essential in helping us with these college courses that we were taking as high school seniors, which again, extremely helpful in my college education. I was also trained in peer mediation, which helped like resolve conflicts in my high school through peer engagement and through learning from one another, rather than having teachers talk down to us. Cutting this program would severely deprive low-income, under-resourced, marginalized students, which the district claims they care about. It would deprive them of access to college and career success.
Hello, Chelsea? Chelsea? Chelsea, are you there? Hello, Hava?
Hi, my name is Hava and I want to talk about early literacy. In the last curriculum meeting last April, actually a couple of weeks ago, the reading resolution was withdrawn. And with that came what I found to be the most important part, and that was collaboration, a work group. So what I'd like to ask is for the community, the district, the BOE, the next superintendent and everybody to please open the dialogue. When it comes to literacy, it's important for all students to have the services that they need. That includes students with dyslexia that are 20% of all general education students. It includes all vocal groups. All educators, special education educators, general ed educators, administrators, principals, professional development, literacy coaches, they need to come together and collaborate. I believe that we can find something that serves all students, but it cannot happen in a silo. That's my request. Thank you so much.
Hello, Sarah?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wu Shen and I'm a senior at Wollenberg High School. I've been with SFUSD since kindergarten. San Francisco is a very diverse city that loves to be inclusive and the Muslim community and other amazing allies have brought Eid to attention multiple times to be recognized. And growing up, I would have to miss days of school with unexcused absences, even though my parents have called in in advance. And missing assignments is really difficult, especially for middle school and high school students. And there's always so much to catch up on and yeah, it's just like a lot of work. They only give you a day to like make it up. And on the day of Eid, I'm always seeing a lot of students and I'm wondering why isn't this a holiday if we're all missing school? And I just think it's really embarrassing that we have been asking so many times, especially since I've been in the district for 13 years. And it's about time that we just get a holiday. We're fasting for 30 days without food and water and attending school. The least we can do is just have a day off. Thank you.
Hello, is this Ms. Marshall on the call? Ms. Marshall, are you there? Hello, Tom?
Hi, yes. My wife and I are both teachers and a parent of the kindergartner in the district. I'm really dissatisfied with the rollout of Empower as well. With this, I had to spend so much of my day hoping, praying, guessing that it will get submitted, my time sheet, even though I do everything correct and do it ahead of time, and so do my colleagues. We shouldn't have to worry about this. Principals and secretaries already have so much on their plate, but now they have to do this. How is this saving anything except more bureaucratic confusion? And you know, we have all these teachers who are saying, I'm not getting paid, I'm not getting paid. And instead we're saying, hey, it's okay. It's not okay. And any other job, this would not be acceptable. And teachers, we say we respect them, say we appreciate them, we teach at Appreciation Week, but come on, we're not showing it. We need to step up. Even the people who are having payroll and salary, they don't know how to fix a lot of issues when you call them and you can't leave messages in the district. You don't know who to call. There's no clear directory. So this is a big mess and we need to actually put some action instead of just saying we're doing it. Please, this is people's lives.
Thank you. Hello, Lara?
Hi, this is Lara Kishwani. I'm the Executive Director of the Arab Resource and Organizing Center, also here to speak in favor of Eid to be moved as a holiday in the school district. I want to thank the teachers, the parents, the youth, the families and our allies who've shown up to support us, also lending solidarity to all of the demands being called for in order to make it sure that our students are served well and that staff are also served and respected. I just want to say that Eid is next week and it would have been really lovely if we were able to celebrate with you all and our family that we had actually passed Eid by now for the following school year. That was what we had envisioned. We're hoping that we can still do that. So that it gets agendized very soon so that we can still announce to our community members that SF Unified has heard them and that we will be moving forward to ensure that the communities and students are respected in the coming years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Charles. I need to promote you to panelist in order to speak so your video will be shown, but you can go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to also voice my respect for Eid as a recognized day. It will prove respect for Arab-American heritage and give visibility and an opportunity to educate students in the district. About the DNP or deferred net pay, please take from the rainy day funds to make the employee July paychecks whole. Teachers should not have to be forensic accountants to read their paychecks. You will not be able to return all the DNP, please, solve the DNP. And when people ask where the money is going, as much money is spent at 555 Franklin as at the sites. It's going downtown to 75 directors and executive directors and we need to spend the money directly at sites. Thank you very much.
Hello, Patricia or Patrizia?
Hey, thanks, everybody. Let me pull up my little speech here. Hi, everybody. My name is Patricia Barrasa. I am speaking as a Peer Resources alumni and now a Beacon Director. Was SFUSD my whole life, kindergarten through 12th grade. And as someone who started her career in youth development at seventh grade as a conflict manager in peer resources, I really need you to look at restoring the funding for our TSAs to be able to give our peer resources teachers the support they need to be successful peer program teachers in our schools. I have been in countless meetings speaking of how to serve students. That's what we've been doing for, you know, the last three years. How do we serve? How do we serve? How many do we serve? And I think we forget that these young people are serving each other on a daily basis. Peer resources gives them the skills to know how to navigate those conversations. So many of our young people have lost friends, are dealing with domestic violence and these programs are how they learn how to do it. So please look at your emails tonight because I will be sending something out. But yes, TSAs really, really need our coaches back for our peer resources programs.
Thank you. Hello, Rianda? Rianda?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I apologize. I just got back in the car and it was going to my phone. But anyways, good evening Superintendent Matthews. All the Board Commissioners and Deputy Superintendent Ford Martell. My name is Rianda Batiste and I'm one of the eight parent leads. And tonight we're calling to respectfully ask for us to revisit the conversation regarding the Lowell admission policy. We were told that this was something that we would address in the future and it has been tabled. And we want to ensure that Lowell goes forth from now and forevermore as being a regular admission for all of our high school students. We can see the number of Black and Brown students have increased under the regular admission policy and we ask respectfully that we revisit this conversation and ensure equity for all of our babies throughout SFUSD who want to attend Lowell.
President Lam, that concludes the allotted time for public comment.
Okay, at this time, thank you to our Zoom public commenters. We have seven speaking cards I will extend for the public comment tonight. I'd like to call up Carolyn Kolovik, Dante Popolinski, David Ko and Kelly Wash. You'll have one minute each, please.
My name is Carrie Karlovic. I am a teacher at George Washington High School and I'm here today to read the story of a fellow teacher who is in her second year of teaching and her first year in SFUSD. This is her story. I always knew I was born to be a teacher. I come from a family of teachers and teaching is my favorite part of every day. In August, my first month at SFUSD, I was not paid. They insisted they paid me, then they said they would send me a check and finally, three weeks later, I had to leave work early to go get my check from the payroll office. That month, I had to borrow money from my family to cover rent. Since then, I've had different pay every month with little to no explanation and my frequent requests for help often go unnoticed. Reviewing my pay stub is sometimes my whole evening, not making dinner for my family, not grading, not taking care of myself, but poring through my pay, trying to decipher the purposefully difficult language and acronyms in hope that my contract has been met. My coworker's words hurt me. She designs thoughtful curriculum and is a source of strength for her students. The level of disrespect that she has endured is now one of her early impressions of the teaching profession. I am in my 10th year of teaching. I know how many early teachers are lost in those first five years. Please keep teachers in teaching, change the system, honor Eid. Thank you.
My name is Dante Popolinski. I'm a math teacher and a soccer coach at Washington High School. I'm choosing to use my time to finish Maddie Williams' story. So after her taxes were incorrectly applied to her late check, the check was also approximately $40 short. Six weeks later, these issues were still unresolved and no one responds to her emails. To add further insult to injury, she was paid eight dollars less per hour for emergency class coverage during January and February. Now she will only receive about 20% of her pay in July. She is demanding that SFUSD provides a financial consultation to all educators and a full July paycheck as a good faith gesture to make up for the heinous wage theft crimes they have committed against SFUSD educators. And that July paycheck needs to come from the rainy day fund as well. It's raining when SFUSD can't pay their educators. Every single time I hear something about teacher appreciation, I completely roll my eyes because so far, the district has all talked on that and they've never actually asked. Ask, make us whole, pay your teachers and recognize Eid.
Hello, my name is David Ko. This is my 17th year in the school district, also attended K-12. I have lost track of the number of hours that I've spent this year trying to deal with first 403B contributions that were never actually contributed. They were deducted from my paycheck and they disappeared. And eventually I followed up and the money did get there, but after I don't know how many hours of pursuit on my part. My wife's dental insurance was randomly interrupted. That also was eventually fixed after many hours on my part. I went over all of my accounts, as many of my colleagues have, and also did trainings after school. And one of my concerns is that while the school district is doing its best, I'm sure in order to address all of the issues that they know about, the fact that we have to spend hour after hour simply finding the issue, I liken it to teachers randomly signing grades and then seeing whether students point out that they've made mistakes. And then at that point saying, oh, yeah, I guess I didn't make a mistake. I'll get around to it. I appreciate the efforts the school district has done in addressing the problems that have happened. However, the problems are still happening. In order to move forward, we need to stop the harm from happening and then undo the harm that has been done. Celebrate Eid.
Hi, my name is Kelly and I'm a parent at Reading Elementary and a member of Serge SF. And I'm here today to call on the board to support our Muslim community, our Muslim students and pass the Eid resolution and add it to the agenda. I also want to thank the board for adding Arab Heritage Month for April, but it would have been nice if that had happened earlier so we had enough time to plan and really be able to integrate that into our community. I've seen firsthand the impact of Heritage Months, of really being able to celebrate our students and our community in the curriculum and throughout our school site. So I want to thank the board, but hoping that in the future that could be earlier and that we could have resources so parents and students and teachers have enough time to really celebrate it and give it the attention that it deserves. So I hope that we can put our values into action and ensure that Eid is recognized. Thank you.
And our last final three speakers for public comment of general non-agenda items tonight is Jen Bowman, Curry Simonsky and Frank Lara.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to also, I would love the school district and I know my Muslim kids would love the school district to celebrate Eid. And they talk about fasting, they're talking about their life and that's, it needs to be done. Second of all, I am, David is the one who told me that my retirement contributions might not be going into my account. Took me hours and hours and hours. It was true. After contacting Vanguard, after, you know, the help tickets, it's finally happening. But I guess the biggest thing for me is I'm here in solidarity with my first-year colleagues who are working so hard and feeling so just disheartened by not being paid, by being called liars by human resources, that they don't have the actual credentials. And I just, it's really been a hard year. So please fix this, give us our July pay so we don't have to go through this again. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie and I'm an SFUSD parent and elementary teacher. Please recognize Eid. All students will benefit from recognizing and learning about this important celebration. Our whole community will become richer. Next, I was trying to save money for July, but now I just spent it all in my unexpected tax bill. I really don't know what I'm going to do in July personally. Many of us don't have time to be forensic accountants by not fixing the problems and making us educators do the work or come down here to get someone to pay attention to us. You're assuring that wage theft is happening. Finally, where is the all-gender restroom on this floor of 555 Franklin or assigned to it? It's SFUSD Pride Month and it's not clearly marked. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Evening Commissioners. Evening Dr. Matthews. Good to see everybody here. My name is Frank Lara. I'm the Executive Vice President of UESF. We want to express our full support for the Arab Resource and Organized Centers Eid Resolution to implement Eid as a holiday in San Francisco. We strongly believe in equity and inclusion and feel it's necessary to recognize and respect our Muslim community members. So please add that to the agenda for discussion. And I think now that I have your attention, I want to raise what we're trying to raise with this SFUSD Make It Right campaign. The issues of Empower are known and we appreciate the progress being done. In pain educators, we see the hard work of one of our staff here checking with members has been in communication with us and very much appreciate that. But I want to raise to this leadership body the importance of thinking what we really need to build for next school year. There are a lot of changes happening and a lot will need to be done in order to be successful. We all deserve a better year. We all deserve a better year. That is known. The July paycheck is going to be a disaster. We reached out to the district about the need for personnel back in October. We raised the concern of COVID in November around the surge in January. We raised concerns about the empower check in early February before we had the issues in March. There are members who will be thousands of dollars in the red. It is not raining. It is pouring. We will struggle to bring hope to educators if SFUSD does not make it right. So please use the rainy day funds to pay educators a full paycheck and set ourselves up for success next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to our general public for coming out this evening, providing your comments. At this time, I'd like to move us as the agenda item number D to the consent calendar. Board members may remove our sever items prior to the vote. Do I have a motion and a second on the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any items withdrawn or corrected by Dr. Matthews?
No, there are none.
Any items removed for first reading by the board? Commissioner Shu?
I would like to sever one item and I have a general comment about all of the items. When can I?
Which item would you like to sever?
Number 16.
Please note that. Ms. Lenoff, can you repeat?
Item 16 has been removed for separate discussion and vote.
Okay. Before we go to roll call on the consent calendar, I'd like to open for public comment. Seeing none for in-person. Mr. Steele, any online?
Thank you, President Lam. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the consent calendar. Could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes. Por favor, levante su mano si desea dar un comentario público. Gracias.
Thank you. Seeing none, President Lam.
Okay, this time, Commissioner Shu, did you have a comment before a roll call on just the consent items that have been moved and seconded, not the severed item?
Yes. This is in reference to the note under item seven, but it's a comment that applies to all. The note under item seven says funding sources. These contracts are budgeted in department and site budgets using a variety of funding sources. The district is underway with developing a report that will outline the specific funding sources by contract. And this is great and I think that applies to everything. And my comment is that in addition to outlining the funding sources for each of these contracts, is it possible to show whether we are on budget for each of these buckets? I assume that all of these consent, they fall in different buckets, budget buckets. So can we show whether we are on budget for each of these buckets or how much of each budget bucket has been spent such that from the beginning to the end of the school year, we can see how we're doing in terms of our budget versus actuals? Because I assume that there's some number associated with each bucket in our budget. And as we approve these things, we have no context. We cannot not approve them and we do trust our staff members in making the right decisions with these contracts. But I would like to see how we're doing in general. This is April, we're almost to the end of the year, are we like 90% to the budget for this bucket, whatever it is. So that's a request. And this applies to the bond program contracts, to all these things. I would like budget versus actuals for each bucket.
Commissioner Alexander.
As Chair of the Budget Committee, I'd like to strongly support that request. Thank you, Commissioner Shu, for making it.
Superintendent Matthews?
I was just going to ask Deputy Superintendent Lee around the possibilities there.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. Thank you, Commissioners. I would like to be able to consult with our fiscal team, Chief Financial Officer Megan Wallace, and our Budget Department, the head of our Budget Department, Emery Gordon, about the specific request. I think Commissioner Shu, if I understand the question correctly, you're looking for each funding source that's associated with each individual contract or expenditure that's included on the consent agenda, to have some sort of report at the time of each board meeting of the funding available to that point of the year and how it compares to the original budget. If I understand the request correctly, that's how I'm interpreting it. I do think that there are possibilities to explore. However, there are some limitations in the real-time nature of our reporting systems that I just feel, in all honesty, I need to explore with the team. And to Commissioner Alexander's question or suggestion or comment, this would be a great topic for us to share back at the Budget and Business Services Committee if you see fit, Chair Alexander.
Yeah, that sounds like a great plan, if that works for Commissioner Shu.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that whether my specific suggestion works in the context of the budget, I don't know. But the idea is that we want to have a goal or target and we want to track our progress. And I think we'll go a long way in educating us, everybody here, to see how we're doing as a district towards our budget and educating the public. And I think that transparency will go a long way.
So I just want to be clear that what I heard Deputy Superintendent Lee saying is that they would take this item to the Budget and Business Services where it will be discussed and that committee, subcommittee could determine whether to move it forward or not. So of course, a staff, what we're trying to do is definitely make sure we're doing what the will of the board wants us to do.
At this time, I look forward to the Budget Team and Deputy Superintendent Lee following up with Chair Alexander. I also serve on Budget, Business, and Services, so I look forward to both the analysis and working with the team on next steps. So at this time, I'd like to call for a roll call on the consent calendar.
This is with the items severed, without the severed item, correct?
Correct.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lam?
Yes.
Let's excise.
So at this time, I'd like to open up for discussion, I believe, for severed item number 17. Excuse me.
I think it was 16, Commissioner.
Thank you. For clarification is for item number 16. Second Amendment to Contract to Increase the Contract Amount for Fiscal Year 2021-22 Between Student Nutrition Services and Revolution Foods.
We have Chief O'Leary Keith here to address any questions. Why don't we serve whatever the question is?
Thank you. Hello, Chief O'Keefe. I have a question. As I understand, we had a contract with Revolution Foods for roughly 11.9 million. Now, because of more meals being served, we have to increase the limit. My question is whether it's the 11.9 million or the requested 13 increase to 13.1 million, are we getting funding from the federal government for whether 11 or 13 million or are we paying more?
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And to answer the question that you had raised earlier too, the budget is still going to come in. We're not asking for an increase in the allocation to SNS for the year because, as your question suggests, we will get additional revenue because more children are eating, because we get state and federal reimbursements. So the amount of revenue that we will generate is going up as well as our expenses going up. So it will offset each other. So yes, we will generate more revenue because more children are eating and as well, we have to buy more food.
And is the revenue the same number as our expense, whether it's 11.9 million or 13.1 million?
The delta between what we generate and what it costs us to run the program is not going to increase. So it's the amount of unrestricted general fund that the district pays to sustain the school meal program is not increasing as a result of, so it's keeping pace. It's like the costs are going up and the revenue is going up at the same level. So we're not increasing the amount of cost to the district to sustain it.
Okay, thank you. As a related question about Revolution Foods, and this contract is ending in a couple of months, so we're going to go into a new contract for food now?
It's actually the same contract because we entered into a contract that had a five-year term when we went out to bid the last time. So...
I see this July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Yes, that's the amount that we're asking the board to approve. So it's not the contract itself, it's the amount that we're going to spend on the contract for that fiscal year.
Okay. And the other years will have different amounts or?
Yes. We're preparing the budget and the proposal for the next fiscal year.
So the bottom line is that this increase is not costing us or contributing to SFUSD's budget deficit.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any additional questions? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lam?
Yes.
Let's excise.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number E, retroactive contracts. Do I have a motion and second on the retroactive contracts?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
None.
Any items removed for first reading by the board?
I do have a general comment, but I don't know if we comment at this time.
I will call upon you before roll call. Any items severed by the board or superintendent for discussion or vote tonight? Seeing none. I will open up for public comment before going to Commissioners for comments. Do not see any in-person public comment? Mr. Steele, can you see if there's any online public?
Thank you, President Lam. So please raise your hand if you care to speak to the retroactive contracts and could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. Thank you. Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. And Commissioner Matomedy, I'd like to open up for your comment.
I just wanted to state our appreciation. I had had an internal conversation about presenting retroactive contracts separately as a best practice so we could easily see them as the public and as board members. And I just want to express appreciation and likewise in support. It's aligned with the earlier comment that Commissioner Shu made about greater transparency around budget and tracking. And so highlighting retroactive contracts is part of that conversation, in my opinion. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff for making that change.
Commissioner Shu? Questions to staff? Should we be expecting that this section will get smaller and smaller in the future?
That definitely is our goal. Absolutely.
And thank you, Commissioner Matomedy. I really appreciate you raising. We have had discussions in the last several months since probably the beginning of the calendar year around the retroactive contracts. So again, thank you to staff for the work in having the separation of those consent calendar and contracts. So at this time, I'd like to call for roll call.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lam?
Yes.
Let's excise.
Thank you. Agenda item F, discussion and vote on consent calendar items severed for separate consideration. We have none today. And to G, Special Order of Business, I'd like to have our first item, A-3G Completion Improvement Grant Expenditure Plan, 22426SO1. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Matthews, I'd like to call to introduce you for the designee.
Thank you, President Lam. The designee presenting tonight, the A-3G Completion Improvement Grant and Expenditure Plan, is our Executive Director of College and Career Ratingness, Jennifer Fong.
Dr. Matthews, there's a correction, it's Dr. Priestley, and I'll be reading it into the record.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Matthews, President Lam, and other Commissioners of the Board. Staff is requesting that the board approve the SFUSD and the San Francisco County Office of Education plans for the A-3G Completion Improvement Grant Program. These plans were presented for first reading on March 8th, 2022, and are unchanged. This one-time state funding provides approximately 7.5 million to increase the number of high school unduplicated pupils who graduate with A-3G eligibility requirements for admission to the California State University and the University of California system. Unduplicated pupils include English learners, students eligible for free and reduced lunch, and foster youth. An eligibility means C or higher letter grades and A-3G-approved courses. SFUSD and the San Francisco County Office of Education plan to use the funding over a four-year period until 25, 26 school year to offer students opportunities such as high school credit recovery to satisfy A-3G requirements and expanded access to post-secondary coursework. These planned activities are primarily direct service to high school students, especially from vocal populations, to improve the A-3G completion rates and will be implemented by central office departments. by central office departments. Staff request that the plans be adopted at this evening's board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Priestley. Mr. Steele, like to open for public comment at this time.
Thank you, President Lamb. Did you want to begin with in person?
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, in person. I do, seeing none, in-person public comment.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to Zoom. So please raise your hand if you care to speak to the A to G completion improvement grant and expenditure plan. Please repeat that in Spanish and Chinese. It's public comment for the A to G completion grant. Thank you. And President Lamb, seeing none.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open to my colleagues for comments or questions to staff. Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Thank you. And I appreciate, Dr. Priestley, that you flagged that this was, it's the same material that was here at the March eighth meeting. Some of us were not yet on the board at that meeting, so I did have a few, I guess, additional questions. One of the things that I know that we've been talking about as a board is student outcomes and metrics and assessment. I understand that, that the grant application and the plan is, you know, you're responding to a number of very specific questions from the state, but one of the things that struck me was not that much detail on assessment, not any detail on how metrics would be established, and how we would know whether the, the funds were successful in improving the, the goals of this one-time grant. I also was wondering, given that it's a one-time grant, where, where you all see this in terms of long-term? Given that it seems like it's going to be housed in the central offices, does that mean there's not going to be additional staff hired to support the work? I'm just thinking long-term, given that we've sort of seen the cyclic issue, my one-time funds coming in, and then, and then they're there, they're not there in the future. So I just wanted to have that long-term perspective as well.
Thank you, Commissioner, for those questions. The first one around metrics and how we will follow this data. We follow very carefully off-track student data in terms of if students are on track for graduation. So we look at credits that students are accruing, as well as their grades, and we approach students and intervene if we see that they are off-track to ensure that they will have an opportunity to get back on track to, to graduate. So that's one of the primary ways that we will be assessing for this particular grant. In terms of long-term, our department applies for multiple grants. This is one of many. So we look for opportunities on an ongoing basis to ensure that we're able to continue to fund the numerous programs that support students towards on-track graduation.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward, did you have a follow-up?
Not, not at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Vice President Bogus?
Yeah, I was wondering if staff could talk a little bit about kind of like what we'll see with the dollars that we're getting from the grant, kind of understanding what we're doing with the money, but as far as scale and reach of those funds, what does that look like for us? And if you could also just kind of give us a picture of how does this money compare to other money that the district is putting towards these efforts or similar things, just kind of have, I guess, a little bit of perspective on that?
So thank you, Commissioner, for the question. In terms of scale, we have never had this opportunity from the state before, and it is a substantial grant. It is our intention to expand our current programs, as mentioned, credit recovery, dual enrollment, dual enrollment, other post-secondary opportunities. And so I think we will have to gauge, moving forward, how these dollars will impact our opportunity to reach more students in our focal populations. And please say your second question one more time for me, or just direct me to what it was.
The moment you asked me that, I just went totally blank on what it was.
And I didn't get to write it down in time. If it comes back to you, please ask it.
And Dr. Priestley, just as a follow-up to Commissioner Wiseman Ward's comment and question, I would welcome the opportunity to work with staff, you know, as we look forward, you know, that it is a multi-year grant. It is, I understand, one of many grants that we're talking about, but particularly when we're talking about on-track and graduation rates. So we'd love to kind of look ahead, not at this moment, but to put into our planning processes of, you know, what makes sense of kind of a reporting, you know, to the board as a cycle, right, as a calendar. We've been talking about that as a board with Dr. Matthews, and really looking at kind of a consistent calendar, so we can kind of see, you know, of the different parts of the year, what can we expect? How does that tie back into our LCAP and site improvement plans? So all of that. So this is just more, I would say, a consistent theme that you're going to continue to see being brought forward by the board members, and, and welcome the opportunity to work with the superintendent and staff moving forward. And Vice President Bogus?
Thank you. I still don't remember that question, but just a follow-up that I had. I, I guess what I was really curious about was looking at the additional further information attached on the slides, and really kind of looking at the rates based off kind of ethnicity and race for A through G completion rates. How do we feel like these funds are going to help us bridge the gap for the student groups that are significantly below the district average? Or do we feel that this is just going to be another part of our continued effort to bring that up? Or do we feel like this is, seeing that it is a large amount of money, is a serious enough injection where we should expect to see a massive turnaround, especially for like our African-American, Pacific Islander, and Latino students? Or is that too much of an expectation to make at this point? I guess I'm curious about how excited should people be about this process and what we're able to do to deal with the gaps that we currently have?
So I think we are incredibly excited. I think we could expect to see some incremental gains. These dollars have been specifically called to support English learners and students in free and reduced lunch and foster youth as part of the grant. So I think in looking in those categories, over time, over the next several years, we are hopeful that we would see these dollars having impact for those underserved populations.
No, thank you for that, because I think for me, then, as a board member, just lifting up maybe the importance for us to examine what we need to do at a board level to really support and giving additional support to helping close the gaps and making sure that we have larger-than-small incremental growth over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Commissioner Shu? I remember what Commissioner Bogus's second question was.
We're starting to read our, one another's minds.
Which was, how much are these grants in the context of what we're already spending towards the effort?
We have several grants that we apply for on a regular basis. I think it's important to note that we have received, there has been reductions in various funding such as PIF. So this will take the place of the funding that we have lost, but, and then also give us some additional funding. So this, this is a gain for us in terms of dollars, and it will, again, be adding just more access to, to the secondary options that we offer.
But are we adding ten percent, fifty percent, two hundred percent?
That I could not tell you offhand, Commissioner Shu, but I'm happy to gather that data and provide it back to the board.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Dr. Priestley, you kind of stole my thunder, because from, I was, I was just going through the PIF CAC materials, because I want to, building on what President Lamb was talking about, we, in the CAC, we had developed reports around A to G recovery and worked really hard to establish some parameters. So I would love to uplift that work for, for thoughtfulness around regular cadence of reporting to the board and to the public around progress with A to G. And in the past, I mean, just for, for, to answer Commissioner Bogus's question, from what I can see, it's been around three million dollars of PIF funding in, in the past, but I know that that's changed going forward where we are in this budget cycle. So this is a significant long-term, longish-term commitment for A to G recovery, which I, I am really excited about, and maintaining the relationships that we already have in place, and make sure that they're continuing to be strengthened. But I, as you know, I love, I love outcomes, and I love reporting, and I love knowing who of our students are being served and where they're being served, which sites we're reaching, which sites we are not reaching, and which, you know, the demographics and profiles of students that we're successful with and not. So to the extent we can report, because I can see in the, in this proposal, there's really not much reporting required. There's one December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and then again, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. But I can say with confidence that this board would be much more interested, and if PIF is indeed building out quarterly reports, I, I would love to see those, or annual reports, for that matter. I would love to see those.
Commissioner Alexander?
I just wanted to build on the, the comment around the, how much of, is this compared to the overall budget on this? And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, colleagues, but I think the board, moving forwards, is going to be really interested in getting reports that cross funding sources and, and think about things in terms of function, so that we can say, okay, here's what we're spending on A through G success. And if from one year to the next, we transfer funds from PIF to this grant, to unrestricted general fund, that's important to know as well, but, but we don't, it's not that helpful to have decontextualized pieces, right? And this has come up with PIF also, where there's, there's a high level of accountability when something is funded by PIF, and then it gets moved off of PIF, and that, that whole accountability system is no longer being used for those funds. So I think what we're interested in is an accountability system that's tied to the LCAP, that's transparent, and that applies frankly to all the money we're spending, right? So that this, I, I mean, this, this level of, of reporting, I think, to the board is what we're, we're interested in. So just moving forward, I'm seeing nodding. So just, we can talk more about that in Budget Committee or wherever it's appropriate, but I think for staff to know, that's what kind of our expectation is going to be moving forward.
Thank you all for your comments. At this time, I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lamb?
Yes.
That's six eyes.
Thank you. Now moving to special order item of business number two, the superintendent's resolution establishing virtual academy, a TK eight school of primary enrollment for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three, resolution two-two-four-two-six-S-zero-two. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
I'll second. Can the president second?
I'll second, if not.
I'll say, yeah, sorry, I wasn't quick enough.
Commissioner Matomedy seconded. And I'd like to ask Dr. Matthews to introduce the designee to read the recommendation into the record, please.
Thank you, President Lamb. Reading the recommendation into the record will be our Deputy Superintendent of Instruction, Eniqia Ford-Morthell.
Good evening, commissioners and community members. Staff is seeking board action for a TK eight virtual academy for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, I'm sorry, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The resolution has been posted on Board Docs, and copies, hard copy should be available for the public. I would, just in the interest of time, I'm just going to read the therefore clause into the record. And the therefore clause says, now, now therefore be it resolved that the San Francisco Unified School District attest that the above recitals are true and correct, approves the creation of a new school named SFUSD Virtual Academy, AKA Virtual Academy, to begin enrolling students for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and authorizes the superintendent or other, or their designee to execute all necessary documents to notify the California Department of Education of the establishment of the virtual academy, and to apply for a county district school code to the California Department of Education. The application to the California Department of Education is also attached to the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Ford-Morthell. At this time, I'd like to open for a public comment. Is there in-person public comment? Seeing none. Mr. Steele, for online?
Thank you, President Lamb. If you care to speak to the resolution for the virtual academy, please raise your hand at this time. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Good afternoon. Buenos Aires, por favor levante su mano si desea un comentario público. Gracias.
Thank you. Rianda?
Apologies, I didn't mean to speak to this item.
No, no problem. Seeing none, President Lamb.
Thank you so much. I'd like to open for comments from commissioners or Dr. Matthews. Commissioner Shu? So I did see this at the curriculum committee meeting a week or two ago, my first curriculum committee meeting. And at the time, I thought it was strictly an informational item and was not made aware of the imminent nature of this request. It was presented as where we can go, not where we are going. And now that I looked carefully at it, it did say twenty-two, twenty-three. But there was no detail at the curriculum committee presentation, such as the ones included in the document today, that says virtual academy-related documents, in their enrollment, projection, staffing, et cetera. Those, those details were not presented at the curriculum committee meeting, presentation. If you look at that, you'll see that, too, it was not there. So I would have expected this level of detail to be presented to the curriculum committee for discussion and feedback before it is brought to the full board for a vote, because as it is, having seen it for the first time just in the past couple of days, I have a number of questions that, I, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask those questions now, but I have a number of questions. I think a number of other commissioners also have questions.
Commissioner, Commissioner Shu should ask those questions to Dr. Matthews or to staff.
Yes, that, that, that's why we're here. So yes, she should ask this question.
Okay. Maybe I'll ask one, and I'll let others, and then come back to me if first question is, where did you get the projected enrollment numbers on page fifteen? Did you survey and confirm that all the current enrolled students in the OLP will want to enroll in this program for the future, including when COVID concerns become much less?
So at this point, Commissioner Shu, our numbers, we have done some engagement with our students who are currently enrolled in the OLP. who are currently enrolled in the OLP and ODLP. Our leadership at those virtual sites have, or sorry, virtual programs have led three town halls to engage families in the possibility of it. And so informally, we have a small number of parents who've expressed interest. We are making assumptions just based on the interest that we had, not just at the start of the pandemic, but ongoing interest that we've had, that sites have had in the virtual option. And so have kind of, you know, picked the grade, the, the, sorry, the caps of each gray level based on those enrollment predictions. And they're, they're pretty conservative. We're anticipating about one class per gray level. As you get in the higher grades, you know, there, there definitely is going to be some need for multiple teachers to teach the different subject areas. But we try to consider the demand that we've had to date as well as the informal data around the interest in the virtual options going forward to make our predictions. Can I also just apologize? I did think that these numbers were shared either at the Curriculum Committee or at another presentation that we did. And so I'm looking at the deck myself and apologize if that, that I did not share that information. But I will say that it was an informational item and the purpose of this presentation is because we also need to, as said earlier, submit to the California Department of Education in order to get a school code to make this a school. And there's, there's a, there's a lengthy process that has to, you know, be, that we need to engage in in order for that to happen, in order for the school to even be a school for the 2223 school year. So there is still much detail that we need to flesh out as we build out a school, separate and different from a program. But we do need to, you know, at least express interest to CDE that we are trying to open.
I think your, your sound is off for a second. I think it's us. Can you talk now?
Yes, can you hear me now?
They're working on it right now.
Okay.
I think it's on our end from what I'm hearing because.
Deputy Superintendent Ford-Morthell, can you do a test, audio test?
Can you hear me now? No?
You're on mute now.
No, I'm not. I'm not muted. I feel like singing to the people. This is my opportunity. Joanna, this is my chance to get to.
Yeah, you're still muted in the room.
Should serenade the people that are tuning in virtually.
You don't even know, Joanna. I would totally break out in song. Hans, there, she'll tell you.
Sing, sing, sing. Can they hear us?
The virtual friends can hear us. Unfortunately, the folks in the boardroom can't hear us. So we have to.
Can you hear me, guys?
We can hear you.
Okay. Enika, why don't you try again?
The virtual space can hear you, Ms. Lenoff. I'm not sure about the room.
Can you all hear me in the boardroom now?
I thought that was Commissioner Lamb that answered, sorry.
Deputy Superintendent Lee, can you hear me?
Yes, President Lamb, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The rest of us on Zoom can hear Deputy Superintendent Ford-Morthell.
We don't have a mic on.
Commissioner Lamb, are you using your computer or the mic?
I'm using the computer this time.
That's why we can hear you, okay.
Hello? Jackson? Oh, thank you, Jackson.
All right. I think our audio is back. You helped to remind me, Deputy Superintendent Ford-Morthell, were you responding?
I was responding in much detail. I don't know if you heard any of it or part of it or.
Part. I only heard you partially, so.
So I think nutshell answer is that we, we were pretty conservative with the student enrollment numbers. I do apologize if it was not available in the Curriculum Committee presentation, the one that we have linked in the appendix. It did have projected enrollment. And so there, there seems to have maybe have been, you know, two, two sets of documents, one that had the appendix with the enrollment and another set that didn't. So apologies to the commissioners who did not get that information. But we are projecting about 500 students, looking at about, you know, one to one and a half classes per gray level. And that is both informed by some informal meetings. The current leaders of the virtual programs have led town halls with families, I think about three to date, and kind of gauged interest there. And we also just use the ongoing interest that we've had in the ODLP and OLP program, even post the school closure, to gauge interest. We anticipate that after round two of enrollment, we'll have better information around the data. So that was a part of the answer that I gave, much abridged. The other thing that I said is that the Curriculum Committee item was an informational item. And the action that's requested here today is because in order for us to start a school, we need to have a CDC code to have a school. And that is something that we need to submit to the California Department of Education along with several documents to get that code to then start building the school. And so the timeliness of this is really about that, Commissioner Shu. We know that we have much to build out as we think about moving from a, a program to an actual school, a lot of which is already in place. But this is really about us being able to get the board approval to even start to get a school, which the first step in doing so is to have a CD, a CDC code for a school site, a virtual school site.
Yes, go ahead. Actually, the second part of my question was the, have you confirmed that the families that are enrolled in OLP are there because of COVID concerns? And if and when we get to the day and age that we don't have as much COVID concerns, would that warrant ongoing school like this?
So I have a couple responses to that. One, I just want to remind you all that we have an OLP and then ODLP. Our OLP program was specifically reserved for students who could not attend school because of contraindications or some medical conditions. And then the ODLP program was offered to families who, for various reasons, did not want or did not feel it was safe for their students to go to school. Some of those reasons were definitely related to COVID and the pandemic, but there were others who enrolled for reasons outside of that. And so because of that, we're clear that the attendance and the participation in a virtual option is not solely because of COVID, although in SFUSD, that, that is what sparked our need to start a Virtual Academy. I would also say that the Virtual Academy, just, just from a strictly strategic standpoint and just as an educator who's very much interested in offering a diverse portfolio to families, is not just about COVID. It's also thinking about ways that we can, again, just what I said, diversify our options. We know that there has been much, much interest in a virtual option and that there are some families who have said that their babies, COVID aside, just do better in this type of learning. And it's an opportunity for us to create a different learning opportunity that might actually draw and attract more students and families and maybe even help us maintain the ones that we have as we're just allowing one more option. We already have an alternative school option for our secondary students. And I'm sorry, there's a lot going on in the Morthell home. And also just want to offer that option for our students in elementary as well. So it's not specific to COVID, even though that's what sparked us to go in this direction, what last fall or two falls ago.
I'm going to go to Student Delegate Lamb for questions next or comments.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first here are a couple really more logistical and they kind of piggyback off of Commissioner Shu's. But as a resolution, I understand that we're supposed to be doing two readings. So I'm wondering when the first reading for this resolution was? Because I, I know that I don't quite recall the first time around, but I could just be remembering things wrong.
The first presentation of this information was at the Curriculum Committee, that Commissioner Shu just mentioned. And that was on April 11th. And again, it's just because of the, the timeliness of this, that this item that we're bringing it to you in this fashion so soon after the Curriculum Committee.
Right, got it. I'm wondering though, is it, and this is, I guess, a process question, maybe for General Counsel, but are we supposed to have a first reading to the board and then have a referral to committee with resolutions and then a second reading? Or can that process be bypassed?
I'm happy to answer that. So for some items that are special orders, they don't have to have a first and second reading. We've phrased this as a resolution to meet CDE's requirements. And we also are mindful that we have a time pressure here. So in order to be able to open the school for next year, we need to get our CDE code in. So the decision was made to put it on for curriculum, for the informational and to hopefully surface questions and then to bring it here tonight for action.
Got it, thank you. That clarifies a lot. And then I'm just wondering, after the Curriculum Committee meeting, what was the recommended action from the Curriculum Committee in regards to this resolution?
There wasn't, because the details were not presented. And there wasn't, as I said in the beginning, I didn't know that this was coming up for an action at all.
Okay, that, that makes me a little worried. And that was kind of what I thought, what, what happened. But I'm also wondering, so we've been saying throughout all of last, or most of last year, let's say, that in-person learning is the best for our students. Are we still sticking by that and maybe encouraging families not to enroll in the Virtual Academy unless they have extenuating circumstances?
I would say that I tried to every time say that in-person learning was the best option for most of our students. Our babies have different learning styles, different needs, and families have different circumstances. And so I do think that we still believe that for the majority of our students in San Francisco, in-person is better. But we also are aware of there are some students, because of their different learning styles and again, because of their situations and circumstances of their families, might be better or do better or be able to access education more if a virtual option was offered. And so we're not changing our tune at all. We're just now providing an opportunity for us as a district to get ahead of it versus being reactive the way the pandemic required us to be and actually being proactive, hearing the needs of families, seeing that there are some students who really thrived in the virtual program model and then really building it out with, with a different level of intentionality and some more lead time than we had. I don't know however many falls ago when we got this start. It feels like forever ago. And so that's, that's the thing. And but we still very much say the same thing about the in-person learning option. And again, I think that's why we also try to keep the numbers conservative. We're not expecting this to be a school of thousands of students. In terms of who we will prioritize for enrollment, those are some of the details that we need to work out in collaboration and communication with you all as board commissioners, but also get some feedback from our, from our families who are participating in the program currently. So we haven't nailed that down yet. That's some of the details that we have to figure out once we get approved for us to have a virtual school.
Okay, thank you. And I just have a, I guess, final comment before. I want to hand it off to other commissioners that want to ask questions. But I think I share a lot of Commissioner Shu's hesitance around this just because of the whole process thing, knowing that. I know that we have a tight deadline and that there's a reason why that this was only up for, for this board meeting, but also referred to the Curriculum Committee. I just, I'm worried when we have members of the Curriculum Committee saying that they didn't get all the information they needed, also not having a recommendation out of that committee is really concerning, especially when we're talking about creating an entire school. And I guess from like a student standpoint as well, I know that we currently have Independence High School, which I would say is the closest to the Virtual Academy in terms of an independent learning option. And even Independence High School, how it's super flexible. And I know that students have a lot of choice with their scheduling, but they still have an in-person component to their schooling, whether, I believe it's like 15 or five to 15 hours on campus. Along the lines of that, they still have to be, they, they still have some component of in-person. And I guess for our youngest learners, especially since this Virtual Academy is for K through 8, I'm really concerned about not having at least some aspect of that in the programming and having it completely virtual. Although I understand the different circumstances that family, why families might choose this completely virtual option for their students. And so those are just my immediate thoughts. And I'll, I'll hand it back to President Lamb.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Ford-Morthell. And I want to preface by saying I appreciate creating as many environments that are inclusive and that are responsive to all of our students' needs. I think that is critical. I think that's really important. So like, that's, that's sort of the foundation where I'm, the next set of comments are going to sort of build from. With that being the case, I am very concerned with the pace here. And I think that what we've seen as a district, it, there has been a lot of actual crisis and actual need to move really, really quickly, perhaps sometimes without the ability to engage in the thoughtful, intentional, transparent work just because things felt like they were on fire or COVID was exploding. I don't know that this is the time for that. And I am not comfortable moving forward, especially with a structural deficit in play where there is, I understand that the initial source of phones or funds are going to be ERISA funds, which I think are going to go away. So what is the long-term budget impact? If we don't know that now, given that there is teacher attrition, given that there's principal attrition, given all of the other major, real financial woes, to me, to, to, to set up a new system without fixing the systems that currently need fixing? to me, to, to, to set up a new system without fixing the systems that currently need fixing, um, is, is really concerning to me. And so I think that I would be very interested in, in thinking about how to engage in this process for perhaps to think about whether it's appropriate for a future school year. But the, that, the pace of this program right now, it, it feels like, um, I'll just say, it's, it's not a, a comfortable one that I'm, I'm, um, it's not one that I'm comfortable, um, working with. And I think sometimes there are actual crises where we need to move really quickly. I don't know that this is one of them. Um, so I just want to say that.
Go ahead, Vice President Bogus.
I was, uh, I was wondering if you could just kind of give, um, a little bit of the timeline of like how we got to this point and speak a little bit about the decision for this to come before the board as a special order item versus going through kind of regular process? And if you could, I, I think just restate kind of the, the deadlines that we're facing as far as a commitment to this?
Sure. So the deadline, uh, for us to get this information into CDE, uh, to get a school code is May 2nd. The deadline, or sorry, our, our, our movement is, our timeline is also, so it's informed by that primarily. We, we, you know, did express interest in having an online, uh, virtual, sorry, virtual school option to CDE. And with that came a lot of, you know, requirements and documentations and information that they want by May 2nd to even consider that option. So that definitely was a, a key driver. Uh, another key driver is that if we are to open up this model for the 22, 23 school year, we want to make sure that families have an opportunity to consider this option and enroll their students in their, in this option, kind of within our, our larger, um, enrollment system. And so wanting to give families an opportunity to, um, to sign their students up is another option or another reason for, um, the timeline. In terms of just our own thinking about virtual, uh, the virtual option, even, um, last year, I would say whenever we went into, whenever we started our virtual program, um, I, I, I tried to say a lot of times that, you know, again, for me as an educator who's really interested in providing and offering a diverse portfolio to families, that this might be something that we want to consider. We know that several other districts offer virtual learning options, um, some of whom, um, opened those options in response to the pandemic and are going to maintain them, others of whom had virtual options even prior to that. We know that SFUSD continues to try to be creative around how can we, again, attract and maintain our students and our families? And so we've always thought, we being a small group of us who were, uh, engaged in designing distance learning and trying to build up the online learning options, and we were always invested and excited about, um, the possibility of this being something to add to the portfolio. So it's, it's not, it's not a brand new idea. Um, and, and in terms of how soon or why we're trying to do it this soon is because again, we do see interest. Uh, we saw a lot of, um, families who wanted to enroll, even in ODOP. We did not accept every family, um, who applied. And so the interest is even greater than the current enrollment. And again, just wanted to try to be responsive, um, to the families who, who enrolled in the program and stayed in the program, but also the families who, not even because of COVID-related situations, were not able to get, um, into the program.
Could you just add a little bit more about, I guess, the long-term thinking about the school and kind of, I guess, the extent that we're thinking of this becoming something that is added to our portfolio versus something that is more of like an additional kind of COVID, short-term kind of pandemic response?
Yeah. So the goal is that this is actually an SFUSD school model that is a part of the portfolio of SFUSD schools. Um, that is not a short-term, uh, reactive or, or COVID-responsive, um, model, but it's actually a part of the SFUSD portfolio that would, that would be lasting beyond, um, even the 22, 23 school year. At this point, it's just a virtual program. And what that means is that our students are still enrolled in their quote-unquote homeschool, which means that those classrooms where those students are enrolled in, we're not filling seats. Um, and we're, in some ways, we're duplicating efforts and resources because we are paying for the educators to teach those students in the virtual format. And then we also have seats that are unfilled because we're holding those seats in the school buildings, um, in case they choose to return. And so some of our, our decision or, or, our interest in moving to a virtual model or virtual school model, in addition to what I've said previously, is also just to be, um, I think just be a little bit more, uh, fiscally responsive while providing a virtual option to our families.
Could you just, I guess, lastly, could you just kind of talk to what happens if we don't pass this today and how that affects kind of the planning that's taking place and families' expectation to have an option for online learning for K through eight as we, um, move forward?
Repeat that for me one more time, Commissioner Bogus.
What, what happens if we don't pass it today? And how does that impact kind of the planning and the availability of online learning for students K through eight?
If, if we don't pass it today, then we, we have an issue in terms of getting a school for the 22, 23 school year, a virtual school. Um, I guess we would have to go back, um, as staff and, and think about and present to you all the option, if you even want to consider continuing an online program, um, instead of an online school, which again, then would require that we hold the seats, uh, for our students in the, in the home or the brick and mortar school, while we are also paying for educators and resources to engage them in the online, uh, format.
Commissioner Alexander.
I had a couple of questions. One was just, um, technical for general counsel. How, um, I was just curious, normally when we act on something at first reading, we have to suspend the rules. And so I'm just curious what the, this seems, doesn't seem to be on that type of, of. Can, can you help me understand that?
Yeah. So there is no clear distinction in your board rules between what should be a special order and what is a resolution, with a couple of exceptions. Um, board member resolutions are clearly a first and second reading unless you suspend the rules. And policy changes are clearly first and second reading, and that's spelled out in your rules and procedures. But what isn't spelled out is what is a special order versus what should have two readings. So this was one of those gray areas. We can certainly do two readings, but I think, uh, with the time consideration, that is, that is a choice the board has to make.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. No, I was just trying to understand why. Cause normally there's this, normally it's just for the, my new colleagues. I mean, normally when there's something that comes without a second reading, we actually vote to suspend the rules and it requires four, five votes to do so. So that was, I wasn't sort of understanding why this one just was able to be, uh, wrong about that vote. So the second question was just around budget implications. Since this didn't go to budget committee and didn't go through the normal process, what are the, can we get some, I mean, is there a budget analysis yet or, or no?
We have worked with the budget team, um, to think about the, the, the cost of the school as well as staffing of the school for the 22, 23 school year. Um, and the budget team has, uh, worked with us to use ESSER funds to, to do that, to do this model. Um, as the ESSER funds and the, the purpose and the goals of this, uh, school model definitely align. Um, we are working with our budget team to, to build out additional funds or have a plan of where, uh, this school fits in the multi-year projections going forward.
So would it require an increase in spending over what's happening now in the virtual, in the, the, the online learning programs that exist now?
I would want to come back to you with more information as I engage with our budget team, but my initial assessment is that, um, the, the cost would probably be a cost savings because again, we're, we're finding that we're duplicating efforts when we're holding seats at our school sites. And I see Deputy Superintendent Lee just turned his screen on, so I don't want to misspeak. But in some ways, the program option model is, is slightly more expensive as again, we're holding seats and paying for children to be in school that are not in school, while we're also paying for the program. But I'll defer to Deputy Superintendent Lee if he wants to add more, uh, information to that response.
Well, I'll just add a, a little bit, um, Commissioner Alexander. So the, the use of, of ESSER funds, this is, uh, I think you, you may recall, but for, for all commissioners, uh, there was a, uh, the third federal coronavirus relief package that was passed in March of last year, 2021, contained a significant amount of one-time funds, uh, for, for SFUSD as, as well as districts across the country. And, uh, there was a reservation of 20% of the funds, uh, that each district received through that relief package that was identified for learning loss or learning recovery, as we've been, uh, calling it in our district. And those are the funds that we, uh, worked with, with Deputy Superintendent Ford Mortel and, and her team to, uh, to associate with, with the costs for the upcoming, for the initial year, perhaps the, the first couple of years. Uh, but as I think commissioners know, those funds are one-time funds. And once they're spent, they, they won't, uh, continue. So they, they are sufficient to, um, to cover, you know, several years. I think the expiration date for those funds is, is 23, 24 or September of 2024. So that would, that would, uh, at least cover, uh, a couple of years. And then beyond that, uh, as Deputy Superintendent Ford Mortel said, we, we would need to, to do some more analysis to determine the extent to which, um, the, the, the additional enrollment would or would not pay for itself through, uh, a net improvement in the district's overall ADA, uh, average daily attendance. Uh, and if there was a net increase in our overall enrollment and attendance, then that, that could also generate more local control funding formula revenues. But at this point, it is frankly, a little bit hard to tell, um, whether the demand, whether the students that would enroll in this program would be students that would otherwise not enroll in SFUSD or whether they would, uh, in some cases, uh, otherwise be attending other SFUSD schools, but just prefer this option. So it is, it is a little bit unclear. Long story short, I think we have a plan in the short term that would not, um, have an effect on our overall deficit, but in the long term, it, it's a little less clear.
How much would the staff positions for this school cost on an annual basis?
So I, I might ask Deputy Superintendent Ford Mortel or, or if Joya Balk is on to, to speak on this, but my understanding is that the total costs, I think it's noted in the, in the, in the special order, uh, is approximately $4 million.
So, so I guess my concern from a budget perspective is, you know, we're, so we're saying we, we can spend $4 million a year in one-time funds. But we're also at the same time making a decision, for example, to reduce secondary schools quite significantly. And $4 million would do, would go a long way toward addressing some of the issues that we've heard from places like Lowell and other schools. So I guess I'm, I, I really support this concept. I think it's fantastic. And I'm concerned that, like some of my colleagues, that we're being asked to make a decision the, without considering the trade-offs frankly, and with no clear detailed budget analysis. So I'm just, I'm really concerned about that.
Colleagues, I'm going to wrap up for discussion. We've been talking a little bit over half an hour, but, um, before then, I have a comment, but I'm going to have, um, Commissioner Weissman Ward ask a question.
Thank you. I just, and, and I want to just emphasize one thing that, um, my colleague, Commissioner Alexander just mentioned. We are, there are conversations about consolidating class sizes and capping schools. And I just, I, I cannot reconcile those conversations in existing places right now with adding, with, with a $4 million project where we don't know what the long-term, what, if there is a budget. So I, I, for me, the idea that we would have a conversation about how to consolidate classes, you know, don't, I won't even talk about schools, but, um, capping the schools generally, it feels very inconsistent in this moment to then be making this decision.
Commissioner McTominay.
Yes to everything that's been said before. I just would like to make a process request that in the future, I understand staff's urgency around that. And rather than learning about this through a Friday agenda posting, especially when, um, board members were otherwise occupied all weekend long with, with SFUSD matters, I would really request and ask that staff contacts, contact us to brief us, um, so we can be aware and have these conversations, not on, um, the public's time, but have, um, focused conversations to vet these, these kinds of concerns. Because in addition to those voiced here, I have many others. And if we are going to go through this virtual academy process, I would like it to be thoughtful. I would like it to center on our students and our educators. I would like it to be focused on building trust with our community and also among the board and staff. And I would like it to be focused on acknowledging the budget situation that is looming over every discussion we have. So I would strongly, um, urge staff to take the time to contact board members, um, prior to board meetings, if there are matters of extreme urgency that they would like to make sure that questions are answered and there's, um, confidence that things can move forward.
I have a question around, um, the application. So I'm hearing about the need to submit it by the deadline to CDE for a school code. I see the application. So my question is, you know, if this was to pass, but clearly there are, um, because I just want to express, I, we've been hearing from community, throughout COVID, as well as just even, you know, the last couple of months, from some of our, uh, PAC members as individuals, um, as well as during the Omicron surge. So certainly the value of the exploration for a virtual school. My question is specifically, we submit this application to CDE, a school code, let's say, is approved. Do we have to deliver on that scope? Or does it allow, um, the time to further some of the analysis that my colleagues have raised tonight, either, um, org structure, budget and, and the staffing overall? So just, I don't know if that question is clear.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Lamb, for that very important question. And I apologize that I did not lead with that. Uh, we are again, trying to get approvals that we can get a CDC code to start a school. Uh, we definitely are committed to the thoughtful engagement and planning that I heard many of the commissioners speak of. Getting the CDC code does not mean that we, we are forced to open the school tomorrow. We actually have, uh, two years to get the school up and running. Uh, we did put, and so it makes sense for the comments and the questions that came, um, to start enrolling students for the 22, 23 school year because that was our goal, given the, the interest in the number of folks who are currently enrolled in our online model. And again, wanting to provide an option that was responsive to families, um, and diversify our portfolio. But again, just getting the CDC code, um, itself doesn't, you know, we, we still have some time to thoughtfully build out the school and plan the program in a responsible way. Um, and if that was not to, that would, if that did not lead to an opening for 22, 23, then we could still open for 23, 24. I do have Joya Balk on the line as well. She's not able to engage, um, for whatever reason on her Zoom. So she's on the phone. So Joya, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you for the opportunity. I think that was, was pretty clear about the ability to, um, maintain the CDS code for two years before opening the school. Um, and I just wanted to also iterate that, um, the idea here would be so that, um, students would have a primary location for their school site instead of having to do the dual enrollment that we have currently. The dual enrollment, as Deputy Superintendent Ford Mortel mentioned, causes us to double pay for the students, both in their brick and mortar school and in the virtual school, but it also has a negative impact on our attendance-taking ability and our, our, um, Sback and assessment reporting grades. Currently, the students that have been in OLP all year are going to be reported on their homeschool, um, reports. And they haven't been participating in those homeschools. And so by allowing us to have our own CDS code for the online learning academy, we're really intending to actually look at the student data, um, in the, um, the context where they're learning, so that we can actually see the reports for the brick and mortar schools, um, as authentic to the students that are learning there. And the students that are in the online learning program will be able to have the reports, um, to their own CDS code.
I see Student Delegate Lamb, so I want to make sure that you have, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just have a really quick, so I guess it's a process request. But, um, earlier, General Counsel Hope, um, talked about a gray area when it came to, um, our board policy and resolutions, uh, in regards to first and second. our board policy and resolutions uh in regards to first and second reading. And so I I guess I don't know if this is where I should do it, but I'd like to make a request that for matters pertaining to opening a new school, I would suggest that we write it into board policy somewhere that we have to do a first and second reading just so that we I understand the urgency of this request, but also, I mean, it's opening a new school and putting that down. And I think that takes a lot more planning and thought. And so I don't know if this is how I should do it, but I want it on record that um I request that when we discuss matters pertaining to opening a new school, we do a first and second reading.
Thank you, Student Delegate Lamb. Um Commissioner Matomedy.
Um there's a couple of things. I guess I'm not really clear on the urgency of the request, given that we knew that this Assembly Bill one thirty was for this year. So we knew if we needed to do something beyond that by our own choosing, that we would need to act for extension. So I don't understand why suddenly, on April twenty-sixth, there's an urgent matter before us. The other thing is the holding seats. We chose to do that. That has nothing to do with the whether a virtually academy exists or it doesn't exist. Assembly Bill one thirty is sunsetting. It is over at the end of this. It has not been moved to be extended. So now we 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 have been the the state is moving for schools to return to um as normal of operations as possible. So I guess there's a few things that are being parsed together or conflated that I'm not tracking in this conversation. And so even if we wanted to apply for um a virtual academy um certificate or whatever it is, I don't understand why on April twenty-six, twenty-two, it is an urgent matter before us and why it couldn't be done at a different date in the future when there's some confidence that there's a baked plan. Like even in the middle school, um uh I mean, I could go on. And I've been with pulling myself back, but like the offerings that are that appear, at least in the sketch of what's happening in middle school. And the other thing is, you know, we have to hire these teachers, and we haven't done hiring. And so if we're actually going to build out something that's going to build trust, I would like there to be um a process that we're that there I I just I mean, I think I think to your point, President Lamb, I think we've spent a lot of time on this discussion. I think there's been a lack of confidence or concern demonstrate and some concern demonstrated. And um I'm just I if we really wanna parse the urgency around this, we can get into that. But I'm I think I think we've I've said my piece, or I'd like to leave it at that.
I have one more comment from Vice President Bogus, and then we will close um discussion.
Yeah, thank you. I I guess for me, hearing comments from other commissioners, I would just say, I think I I just feel differently about it. I definitely hear the concerns, both with it being a special order and I think kind of the level of detail that we're seeing. Um but for me, I definitely feel like there is urgency around the creation of a virtual academy um and the need for us to have that as we go into next year to better support families. Um and I think a lot of the things that we did during COVID is we start to wind them down and figure out what we want to adopt and kind of to bring into our institution. I think a virtual academy definitely should be a part of that. Um and I definitely feel like it's something that I would like to see us have and be able to offer families who don't feel comfortable for a variety of reasons, going back to in-person school and not having to, I think, kind of deal with some of the the struggles that we we felt with families feeling that they wanna keep their school community in connection and not kind of just be in a program that's not connected to a school community. So I definitely hear the concerns for folks, but I just think for me, I I I think I have more 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 confidence that we're on a place where we could successfully establish this and and not break our budget and be a bigger benefit to students and families and educators than by not doing it. But I definitely hear and respect the concerns from other commissioners.
I want to concord to Vice President Bogus's comments. I think what for me, the front and center is um around that fiscal impact. I would say that, you know, while I understand we're in this deadline, it feels like, you know, if I don't support this as if we don't see that value of a virtual academy, I just don't haven't had enough to understand the fiscal impact and what that would mean um in choices. Cause as Commissioner Alexander raised, you know, we've been talking about certain trade-offs, right? And the supports for secondary, and that's something that I have voiced over the last several months about. But if it's gonna be a net zero or that we're gonna benefit, cause right now it's been also explained that we're um not, you know, that we're um having, quote, double costs. That aspect has not been framed particularly to this board as this body. So um I'm gonna ask one more time, so I'm crystal clear for my colleagues. If um the application is approved by this board, do we have to execute what is outlined in the application or through the org chart and the staffing? Or does that allow us still to make changes? That for me, I need clarity on is it to execute this plan that you're presenting tonight? Or does it allow some more space um for that fiscal impact?
Hi, this is Joya Balk again. Um if we were able to move forward with the application to the CDE and they um ordered us the CDS code, we would have two years before we needed to use it. So yes, we would have more time to workshop the plan moving forward before actually implementing.
Commit okay, so I'm really gonna try to wrap this up. So if you can, just to two colleague, two commissioners, please keep your questions um succinct. Uh Commissioner Shu and then Commissioner Alexander, and that will close our conversation.
If by what we mean by approve this plan, I mean, equals approving this resolution, then at the res- the resolution at the bottom says approves the creation of new school name, blah, 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 to begin enrolling students for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That is in the resolution. It does not say that we can begin or have two years to do this. It says we enroll students in the fall of twenty-twenty-two.
Commissioner Shu, you're exactly right. That is staff's intent. I think the point Ms. Balk was making is that we don't have to do that, that CDE will give us up to two years to use it. But you what you are reading is what staff was intending when we presented this to you, which was to open next year.
Um my question is sort of the reverse of Commissioner Lamb's question, which is, uh President Lamb, excuse me, which is um if we don't approve this, what can we continue to do? Did that make sense? Did I ask that right?
So if we do not approve this, we would continue to offer the program as we are currently. Students would only be able to have a secondary enrollment. They would still be enrolled in their brick-and-mortar school. We would not be able to backfill their spaces because we would need to maintain those spaces due to our current contracts with our labor partners and the class size ratios.
So it wouldn't be possible, for example, to to associate that program with one or two schools? So it's so it's part of an existing school as we begin to build it out and try to yeah, like a virtue, yeah, exactly like a my colleague was saying, like a virtual class or a set of virtual classes that are part of, let's say, one elementary and middle school or one K eight. So that then we're we're building, we're kind of building alongside, but we haven't created a completely separate school yet. Is that not an option?
We have, yeah, we have not explored the option at this point. It is possible, but it also um causes the same concerns that we have currently around not being able to um clearly report which students are learning in person and which students are learning in an online function um for attendance and for also for the assessments. Um so we haven't explored that.
Thank you. I just just to summarize, I mean, again, I I really support this idea for all the reasons Deputy Superintendent Ford Morthell laid out. But I don't think that I'm prepared to support this right now with the limited amount of planning and the limited budget information, especially around trade-offs. But I really do appreciate staff's work on it and um and think it's an important offering for us to have as in terms of a program um moving forward.
Okay, I will um ask for a roll call, please.
So this is what what are we voting on, Commissioner?
On the resolution.
I know, to recommendation, adopt or not adopt?
To adopt.
Okay. Um Commissioner, I mean, Student Delegate Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Alexander?
No.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
No.
Commissioner Matomedy?
No.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
No.
President Lamb?
Yes.
You know, that's four ayes, it fails. I mean, four nays, it fails, I'm sorry. Four nays.
Okay. Thank you. Uh we will now shift to item number H, Board Members Reports. Reports from standing meetings. Um I wanted to note that we met on as a special meeting on Thursday, April fourteenth at five P M. We had a presentation uh by the California School Finance, I'm sorry, on California School Finance by School Services of California. And then we had a series of meetings from special meetings from Wednesday, April twentieth, April twenty-first, April twenty-second, April twenty-third, and Sunday, April twenty-fourth. Um the board met to re-review um applications for the position of the superintendent of schools. So we've been spending a lot of time together. And last night, last night, we also had um to Chair Shu, we had augmented Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yes, thank you, President Lamb. Last night, the Buildings and Grounds Committee did meet. And we were updated on the bond program, the twenty-sixteen uh bond program, also custodial services, service levels, and the outdoor learning workshop results. Without going into the details, recommendations were made to the Chief Facility Officer and her staff on how to further refine reporting metrics and update progress to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, as well as the public in future uh B and G committee meetings. And the goal is to define and remind us of our target metrics and track progress for both project-oriented and ongoing tasks. So that will be the format going forward is tell us what the goal is, show us how you're doing.
Thank you. Moving on to number um two under Agenda H, Report from Board Delegates and Membership Organizations. I don't believe we have any. Um and all board reports, any board reports from board members, seeing none. And like to ask um Commissioners to announce any of the upcoming committee meetings. Commissioner Alexander.
So next Wednesday, May fourth, is the Budget and Business Services Committee meeting. And our big, exciting agenda item will be about the LCAP. So don't miss it. Um we're gonna have, I think, some good discussion and and staff's gonna focus the conversation on looking at student data, student outcomes related to LCAP and thinking about um, you know, feedback for the LCAP uh for this year.
Thank you. Any other upcoming? Um we also have one this week.
Yeah, this Thursday, we have the Special Committee on Student Assignment. Um and that's gonna be at six P M. Uh this Thursday.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Number I, Other Informational Items. Just wanted to note um that we have um the radio station K L W ninety-one point seven FM and the State of Station Report, and it's been posted on the agenda um under Agenda I, under Other Informational Items. Um Item J, Memorial Adjournment, we have none tonight.
Pardon me, President Lamb. You do have one speaker on Item I.
Oh, I am so sorry.
I um General Counsel, were you referring to on Zoom?
Uh, no, sir. She is here and present. She just handed us a speaker card for Item I.
I also see one for virtually as well, so I believe. So this time, I'd like to invite um Supriya Ray for um K L W Agenda Item I. And you have one minute.
Hi, thanks for taking my comment. I actually didn't expect to be here still, but my husband was able to take over some stuff tonight, so I thank him. I wanted to comment briefly on this. It's not a topic I normally talk about. But uh I understand that K L W is actually a fairly unique district asset. And one thing I've been thinking about in lines of what a lot of folks have talked about for other opportunities and other avenues for people is that this is another way that we could be offering our students something interesting and unique. There's not a lot of school districts, as far as I know, with a radio license. So can you imagine, you know, having kids be able to actually go through and run a station or at least participate in creating the programming and stuff? I think that would be something else that would be really exciting to people. And that would offer, you know, another substantive thing that they could do and, you know, find a great creative um and learning outlet. So I would urge that the board consider, you know, using the fact that it has a license to make more pathways possible for people. This is something quite unique to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Seal, I believe Steve, we have online um public comment, please.
Thank you. Yes, we do. So please raise a hand if you care to speak to the K L W State of the Station Report. And could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches. Por favor levante sus manos si les añaden un comentario público. I would like to apologize. My microphone does not work. It's not working properly. My apologies.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kevin. You have one minute.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. Uh good evening, everyone. This is Kevin Robinson, parent and educator in the district. And I want to thank K L W for the State of the Station Report. That said, it would be nice to have the station focused on students, education, and their communities. Our districts are made up of mainly students of color and allow their households to not speak English as their first language. As it stands, there's no programming in Arabic, Spanish, Samoan, Tagalog, or Mandarin. K L W is a valuable resource that should not be squandered, but used to enhance and encourage our students' experience and strengthen our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Ben?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. My name is Ben Treffney. I'm the interim executive director of K L W. And I wanted to speak to some of those comments uh which I think are are really great, actually. And Kevin Robinson, I actually brought uh personally one of his own shows, Medium Rare, uh about media that's well-done to K L W as part of our community engagement. And we are a national public radio and British Broadcast Corporation affiliate that carries a lot of national and international programming, a lot of local programming, uh a lot of community-oriented programming in many different communities around the Bay Area, and a lot of student programming as well, including our podcast TBH, which I think that you've heard about and can read about in the State of the Station Report. And I'm happy to report that we actually are gonna be offering our summer internship, our summer high school podcasting institute this summer for students in SFUSD and throughout San Francisco, the San Francisco Bay Area. Additionally, we often work in classrooms, including Burton High School where we're located, and Galileo High School, Alboa, Lincoln, and many other schools whenever we have the funding available to do so, uh which we raise ourselves. I actually write a lot of grants myself to work with students. So we're happy to work as much as possible with students. And uh I'm happy to also entertain other ideas. You can reach me at ben@kwal.org.
Thank you, Ben. Hello, Ms. Marshall?
Finally, can you hear me, Justin?
We can.
Good, good evening, everyone. I highly support K L W. I was at an event last weekend at the African-American Art and Culture Complex via Zoom. And the young man who was the uh facilitator was my former student at Luther Burbank, which is now June Jordan. He works with KLW. So KLW has been around for a long time. I recall when I was at Burden with one of our teachers who was the main DJ at that time. And certainly it can provide a career avenue for innovative students, whether it's a G House or Balboa or Lincoln or any of the other comprehensive high schools throughout the city. So it is a valuable asset because it provides careers for our students for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. President Lamb, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. And thank you to our public commenters. Moving to Agenda Item J, Memorial Adjournment, and then tonight, we now move to Agenda Item K, Closed Session. At this time, before the board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session items listed in the agenda. There will be a total of five minutes for speakers. Seeing none. For public speakers, do we have any hands raised, Mr. Steele?
No.
We do not, President Lamb, but let me announce it in Spanish and Chinese, please, for closed session. Thank you, yes, and seeing none.
Thank you. The board will now go into closed session, thus I call a recess of the regular meeting. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene to open session. Report from closed session. On one matter of public employee discipline dismissal release, the board by a vote of six I. One absent Sanchez approves settlement and release in an employee discipline matter. In one matter of existing litigation, George Washington Alumni Association versus SFUSD at all SF Superior Court Case Number CPF 19516880, the board provided direction to the General Counsel. And at this time, I'd like to formally adjourn for 10:58. Thank you.